Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First, I'm just going to make a couple of notes about the agenda. Number one, we normally have the Pledge of Allegiance, but it's not on the agenda. And secondly, we just need to flip item one and two, which is oath of office first and then approval of the agenda. So please stand as you're willing or able to pledge allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so first, Carson Woods, our executive assistant, will swear in the Commissioner -elect.
Okay, so Article 48, Section 137 in the Charter of the City of Burlington State, all officers of the city shall, before assuming office, take, subscribe, and file with the city clerk the following oath that is presented in front of you. Please wait to contribute your signature until I notarize your oath. I'm going to begin with attendance via roll call. When I call your name, please stay present, and then we will recite the oath together. At the time of recital, you will choose to either repeat "So help me God" or "Under the pains and penalties of perjury." So I'll start with attendance via roll call. Stephen Carey.
Present.
Keith Pillsbury.
Here.
Claire Wool.
Here.
Eric Gorman.
Here.
Martine Golick.
Here.
Liz Curry.
Here.
Mike Fisher.
Here.
And Monica Iboncic.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to confirm that all re-elected and newly-elected board members are present, and we will now begin by reciting the oath. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do hereby affirm that I will faithfully discharge my duties as the City of Burlington, Vermont School District School Board Commissioner to the best of my knowledge and ability in accordance with law and the use ending that you feel.
So help me God.
Thank you. I'll come around and sign for you all.
Carson is the notary Republic, so she's officially notarizing the documents.
All right, while Carson's doing that, I would like to, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda. Arlo, Olwell? All right, so the first order of business.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the agenda to make a resolution regarding RIF, item perhaps after the public comment.
Can you speak up? Okay.
I would like to make a motion regarding a resolution on RIF as item six after public comment.
As item six after public comment. Yep, okay, is there a second?
I second.
Technically, this should be done by the new chair.
Okay.
The first order of business should be to elect the chair, and then the agenda consideration should be coordinated by the new chair.
Okay, thank you, Joe. So can you hold off on that, Keith? All right, I, is there a nomination for the board chair?
I move to nominate Claire Wool for board chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Carey? Gulick, then Carey? And any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair abstains always as a protocol. All right, so Chair, you're up.
Congratulations. We'll move to the second order of business, is to elect a vice chair.
I move to nominate Jeff Wick as vice chair.
Is there a second nomination? We have a second, so all those in favor?
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion? Excuse me. The second was Kathy Alwell.
The second nomination was Kathy Alwell.
Yes. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, any opposed?
Motion carries.
All right, so the motion carries. And then we will move to the election of a clerk. Do I have a nomination for a clerk?
Yes, I move to nominate Mike Fisher for clerk.
Do I have a second nomination?
Second.
Second, Stephen Carey? Opposed? Discussion?
I'm going to be voting no on Mike, and I talked to him earlier, and I told him it's not personal, but I have a deep discomfort with our entire board leadership team being represented by a single district in the city, so that's why.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. All right, so the motion carries. And the next item, the agenda.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a motion to approve the agenda.
The next on the agenda is the motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Now, I'd like to add an item.
Add item to the agenda, thank you.
Resolution regarding RIF.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, and any discussion?
You're just voting to amend the agenda.
Yes, just to amend the agenda. Yep, then we move to amend the agenda. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and opposed? Nope? Okay, great, motion carries. I need a copy, sorry, Mike.
So we just need to know what item that amended agenda?
Number six.
Number six.
We'll add it right after public comment.
Carson, are we using the projector? Okay.
And I can grab that.
All right, so next, I need to give the agenda. Thank you.
Oh, is public comment next?
Yep.
Can you say that we're adding Keith's discussion right after public comment?
Yeah. So public comment is next, we are adding the motion for Keith's to amend to the agenda. So we'll begin public comment. I have Alison Seeger.
I'm going to read it because I'm too nervous not to. My name is Alison Seeger, and I am a parent of three kids. My youngest is a senior here at BHS. Oh, not here, but you know what I mean. I have been attending school board meetings now for over 18 years. I was also a school social worker at Edmunds Elementary and Middle School, Champlain Elementary, and the Sustainability Academy when it was Lawrence Barnes. I currently work with some of the most disenfranchised students at BHS through my current position through Howard. I get to walk through the high school and alternative programs frequently, seeing what is going on, and talking with students about their varied perspectives of school life, what is working and what is not. We are in a nightmare of a political situation regarding education here in this country and in our state, and sometimes I wonder in this town. We have a Secretary of Education divorced who does not like public schools and is set to destroy their existence. We have a governor who is running havoc with our teachers and our school funding, and we have a mayor who didn't even mention our public schools in his address last night. When political crises happen, we can be sure that there will be tightening of budgets, resources will become even more scarce, and people will begin to vote in ways that will solely look after their own self-interest rather than the interests of larger groups. When this happens, people go into survival mode because they are worried that their own needs and those of their children will not be met. Who suffers at times such as these? People who live in poverty, people of color, the disabled, ethnically diverse populations, refugees and immigrants. Who prospers during times like this? White, upper, and middle-class folk. Why? Because people like you and me have a voice. We have a cushion, we have resources to spare, we can afford cell phone service, internet connection, a car, gas, we speak English, we have access to public buildings, we have extended family living nearby, we can afford tutors, extracurricular activities, we can afford a lawyer if our kids get into trouble, we have decent credit so we can take out loans for our kids to go to the college of their choice. We are connected in many ways, and that is why we, as white, middle-class folk, will be just fine. I need to know that as a school board, you will be ensuring that all of our children will be just fine, every single one of them. The strategies continue, closing the achievement gap will be seen as a priority, that restorative practices that have been put into operation in our high school will continue and grow, and that we will be pushing for our staff and faculty to reflect the diverse population of our children. I and many others will be watching with a close eye how these issues unfold over the weeks and months to come. There will be folks coming to meetings to ensure that you, as board members, stay true to your election speeches regarding transparency and equity. I wish you luck as you go down this road of being on the board. It is a huge undertaking, having the future of a community's education in your hands, and I do appreciate your service.
It was a good speech.
It was better than a good speech. Incredible. Next in public comment is Bill Bryant.
Good evening, my name is Bill Bryant. I reside on Ferguson Avenue. Do not touch. Okay, tell me if it's not working. I am shocked and appalled by the Burlington School Board's decision to hold an emergency meeting at 9:00 PM on a Sunday night on three hours' notice in disregard of the advice of the Board's attorney that such meeting would be in violation of Vermont's open-meeting law and the legal requirement of providing the public with 24 hours' notice. The matter is exacerbated in that it was a significant religious holiday for many in our community, both Easter and Passover. At issue here are serious allegations of racial bias. Such complaints must be taken seriously and must be investigated and acted upon. The Board's action to meet illegally jeopardize any redress that Dr. O'Bang may be entitled to. It is never justified to violate one law to uphold another. This was not an emergency. The six weeks that had reportedly elapsed from the complaint to receipt of the investigator's findings on Sunday afternoon is not an unusual amount of time for a process like this, and surely the superintendent would be understanding of the time needed. He would have no reasonable grounds for legal action as a result of the time taken to conduct the investigation, as was suggested by some board members as an excuse to hold this illegal meeting. Rather, this meeting was clearly held in order to involve those members of the Board whose terms of office were set to expire at midnight that evening. Our system of government is designed to carry forward despite the changing of the guard brought about by our democratic election process. It is one of our system's greatest strengths. I recognize the relevance of the involvement of outgoing board members in this process. Indeed, I would be shocked if their concerns were not included as part of the investigation and discussion. The report received at 5:00 PM on Sunday could have been properly shared with those members without holding an illegal meeting. The new Board has the option of including those outgoing members in its discussion of the matter and would be wise to do so. Our nation has a sad history of 400 years of slavery, racism, discrimination, and violence against minorities. This history is so ingrained that most of us are not consciously aware of our own biases. I am proud that the Burlington School District seems attuned to addressing these issues and striving to help our community overcome the lingering and very serious results of this worst part of our American culture. But the ends do not justify the means. I do not know any of the players in this matter. I know only as much as has been reported in the press. I have no opinion as to the legitimacy of the complaint of bias. I have a strong opinion, however, on the importance of the process. I served as a Vermont Town Administrator for 30 years and served on the Burlington Police Commission for 12 years. I recognize the importance of our open-meeting and public records laws. I understand the delicate balance between the public right to know and participate and the need to protect the integrity and privacy of personnel matters. It seems to me this Board has as much to learn about process and transparency as about racial bias. Your future training needs to focus on the importance of both. The Board's meeting on Sunday evening is an embarrassment to our community, and the board members who participated owe an apology to the people of Burlington. I've come to expect this sort of behavior from our elected officials in Washington, DC. However, I expect better of our local officials here in Burlington. Thank you. I'd also like to thank you for your service and for listening to criticisms when we're here to give the hat to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Next is Alan Matson.
Most of you know me, but for those of you who don't, I spent six years in your chairs from 2009 to 2015 as a member of the Burlington School District Board. Last night I was talking to another former school board member, and while we didn't really get around to talking about school board much, it did remind me of a lot of the feelings I have about the importance of the school district and the asset that it is within the community, and felt like I really wanted to come out and say a few things. One thing I was struggling with was how to bring up certain issues, but Alison actually resolved that for me, and that a lot of what drives what I have to say are things that Alison brought up. And I think when I come to the end, you're going to hear that some of the things that Mr. Bryant said also apply here. So first, I'd like to welcome you all to this school board for 2018-19, and as always, we have a difficult year ahead of us. There have been a number of challenges recently, and almost everybody I talked to in the community says to me, "Aren't you glad you're not on the school board right now?" And my answer to this question is and always will be yes and no. Yes, because there's all this stuff going on, but that's nothing new. There's always going to be some kind of struggle with what we have going on in the school district. And no, because I personally, and I think most school board members probably share this feeling, that we left the board with goals unaccomplished and that we individually could have done better. That, as I said, is certainly true for me. I hope you noticed that I said "we" have a difficult year ahead of us, and I do mean "we," we, the community. The public schools are an asset of the community, and while you have all volunteered and campaigned to serve in this job that most in the community call "thankless," and I will admit it doesn't pay very well, and while it is labeled as "thankless," I would hope you all find this job rewarding, because it is rewarding. I challenge anyone in this room to attend our high school graduation coming up in June, watch those 250 approximately graduates walk across the stage, and not come away excited by how much value we have just given to these students, former students. But we who are in the community not serving on the board also invest in this public asset of education, and I would hope that we, as a community, could be a resource to the board. Mr. Bryant referenced former board members being part of the conversation, and I think that extends even beyond our most recent board. Our community's children, in my mind, are this city's most important asset by far, more valuable than our trees, more valuable even than telecom. But the real point I want to make, one of the final points I want to make tonight, is that public schools are not just valuable, we also need to value them. Every district has its challenges, and one challenge it faces every district is that public education is charged with providing all children a broad range of services, all children and not any specific group of children. We have to provide education and services for kids whose abilities range from zero to 100 on an uncountable number of axes: academic, language, physical, emotional, economic, behavior, well, I only got two minutes, so I better stop. And I do think we actually do a commendable job here, and this means that you, as a school board, and you as staff, do have to make hard choices about how to use these valuable resources that our state and city provide to you, and this is not easy. In closing, I would add that you, as a board, and that we, as an entire community, can work to support these choices as we all hold ourselves accountable, as well as work toward the common goal of providing for all students. We all need to continue to invest our time, our money, and our energy in this great community asset. Thank you all.
So next on the agenda is Commissioner Pillsbury's agenda item regarding the RIFs.
Okay, because of the timely nature of this, normally I wouldn't have brought it up on an organization night, but this is, I think, a very timely and need to have. Did you have, Carson, my motion that we can put on the screen?
I received a motion.
You have. I think Mike is going to send it to you, but I will read the motion, and then I'd like to speak to it. Be it resolved that the Burlington Board of School Commissioners is concerned about the effect on students of the recently proposed elimination of direct instructional teaching positions, including the interventionist positions, the elementary classroom teacher positions, the high school physical education position, and the high school business teacher positions. The superintendent is instructed to take no further action to implement the elimination of these positions, RIFs, until the superintendent provides the board with additional information demonstrating to the board satisfaction that proposed RIFs are in the best interest of our students. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, I would like to speak to this. Commissioner Matson took the words right out of her mouth. I believe that our children are our greatest assets in this city, and one of the things that we need to make sure that we do is that we use all of our resources that are available to make sure that all of our children are given the services that we can provide. We have in this budget these positions, and now we're reducing these positions, which will have an impact on the children in our school system through whatever kind of situation, whether increased class sizes or direct services not being available, I'm not sure of all the impact, or particular course content not being able to be given. This will have an effect on all of our children in the system. But the real reason I wanted to do this is 91% of the constituents in my ward voted for this budget. They received an annual report about the middle of February, and in this report it said that there would be no instructional personnel reduced. We received a line item budget, and it said there would be no instructional personnel reduced. The majority of the reductions was in central administration. They received this at the middle of February, and I believe in the middle of March, we're already talking about RIFs. So to be true to our word, for people who voted for a budget that didn't think there was going to be any teacher reductions, and then we do it at the beginning of April, I don't feel like I'm being honest or transparent to a constituency that really wanted to do the best they could for our children. And that is what has brought me to this. Basically, let's make sure that if we have the positions in the budget, let's make sure that the children get the benefits of those services, and that we tell our taxpayers that we actually meant that a budget would not have a reduction in non-instructional staff.
Thank you. Mr. Pillsbury, is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to ask Superintendent O'Bang if he could speak to the issue at hand in terms of what the RIF list means.
Yeah, I think probably this board probably needs an opportunity to get a presentation on particulars and the process, because I think there's probably some misunderstanding in terms of, there are a number of reasons why RIFs happen. So you can have a position that, you can have, you can have an instructional position that you maintain but change the role in particular ways, therefore you still have to go through a RIF process. Does mean you're losing staffing, means that you're reallocating the utilization of that particular, there are also grant-funded positions, which our auditors warned us two years ago that we, in Burlington, we haven't had the practice of going through a RIF process. We've sort of just put them forward, and that's not good practice because we haven't received the approval of the grants. So there is a process that goes through in terms of ensuring that we follow procedure and then eventually hire those staff back. In most cases, I believe the staff are aware that this is the process. Sometimes staff may not be keenly acute to the process, and they might see something and not understand, they have to just wait a month for everything to work through and go through. But I would be happy to do a presentation at the regular board meeting to explain the process, and I think the board would then have a better understanding of the budget process and the RIF process. Because I think if you look at, once you see that, you'll see that the budget that was approved is still maintained without any sort of exemptions or additions.
Commissioner.
Is there a place that the board members can see a copy of the?
Can we put it up there?
Is that possible?
Can I also add, I believe that in the resolution talks about no action being taken with the RIF. Document was approved last week, actions already happened, staff are already going through the RIF process, and I know that individual teachers or staff have taken their rights in terms of bumping others to move into positions, so some actions have already started, the process has started. Once the board has approved it, the process has started. So I'm not sure how much you can talk about stopping what's already been approved from the district, but I'd be happy to do a presentation to explain exactly what the status is and do the alignment of what was approved, the budget, and what's actually happening. So I think there's a bit of misunderstanding in terms of how it all correlates.
I would just like to ask Commissioner Pillsbury to clarify what he means by "take no further action," because as Superintendent O'Bang has indicated, the RIF notices, I believe, have already gone out, is that correct?
Yes, I am aware of that. I just have to say, no disrespect, but I've been a teacher for 40 years, so I'm very familiar with reductions in force. So I know what's happened already, but I know that they can also be changed if the board gets information that, if the positions are actually being reduced. When you talk about reduction in force, you're talking about losing or cutting positions. And if we have additional students coming in, maybe not next year, but the year after, we may be asked to add more positions. We're losing these positions. Some people may be given another job, but... Some people may be given another job, but what I'm concerned about is these elementary classroom positions and the impact I look at. I looked at the data that was given to us on the, on the PowerPoint, and it looked like the classes that were going to, the schools, the three schools that were going to lose a teacher would have a significant increase in that, that grade level class size. So I think that's something that we need to think about, what's the impact? As we're taught, we keep, we all hear stories about parents saying of, of a child not being able to get particular support or help, or a trauma situation in a classroom, which with only one or two, with one adult in the classroom, it, it really can't be handled and has an impact on the whole class. So I think if we put the money in for these positions, we should, we should have those positions because that's, our job is, people want to, want the students to get the help that we are trying to do as a system. So what I'm saying is, I know the teachers have already received these RIFs, but I think if we, we stop and, and talk about whether this is really something this new board wants to do, then we'll at least have had that discussion and been, and been fair to at least my constituents who voted in favor of this and are asking me, well, how come you're cutting jobs when we didn't, when you told us there weren't any jobs going to be cut?
Commissioner Brown?
I would just like to, I can only speak for myself, but I understand that the RIFs have been given out. I'm, I guess I'm more interested in making sure that the actual positions are not eliminated at this point, and being a new board member, I would just like to be more apprised of how this fits in a greater plan and what the rationale was behind it and so forth. So I would, I would really appreciate a presentation or more information, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I would welcome that opportunity. I think there's some front load that needs to happen for this particular board starting out. I would say that also, I hear the comments in their affair in terms of what you might hear from individual schools and for the board to think systemically in terms of what happens as a district is different than may happen at a school. So I'll give you an example, we could have, let's say if we had 200 teachers as a district, and we said we're not going over that threshold or below that threshold, but we may have a school that enrollment is lower and another school is higher, so you're shifting staff over, right? You still have 200 teachers, but then one school might be saying, hey, we're losing a teacher, but they're not actually not losing a teacher, just that staffing is being shifted to where, where there's a need, and there's no reduction as a system in terms of, so some of that has to be teased out, and sometimes, you know, we hear one particular situation, we think, oh, that's happening across the board, but in actual fact, you'll probably see when we, when I do the presentation that we've actually added staff to the system rather than reduce staff. So we'll, I'd love the opportunity to explain that because it's, it is a little bit tricky how, how that, that works, the connection between that, and it's challenging for staff as well, too. We get many calls in human resources from, from people in the schools saying, what's going on, how do you, what's, and then they have to be explained exactly what happens, and then they understand a little bit better. And sometimes there are mistakes, and it's just logistical mistakes, and it gets worked out as well, too. But I would be happy to have that conversation with this board and educate you as best as possible so you can make some good decisions, right? The only thing I would say is that I would need some clear direction in terms of no further action of this to be approved, because I'm not sure what that means at this point, right? If we're following the contract in terms of what we need to do in terms of different positions, and there's so many nuances that we couldn't go through it tonight, and the process has been started, considering it was approved last, last week, I think it was, last week. So I'm not sure exactly what is meant by no further actions, right? Because I, from my perspective, I think we're doing what we're, we were asked to do based on the things that happened.
So, sorry, you want to go ahead, Stephen?
Just going to ask, so all the RIFs that are, were intended to be made have been made at this point?
Correct.
Okay.
But can I clarify, there is a difference between riffing an employee and eliminating a position, is that correct? Yeah, so I guess I would just, in terms of no further action would be to not eliminate the positions. The RIF notices have been handed out, we understand that. If you could just hold on to those positions while we get a chance to, you know, assess the situation, that would be great.
Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair Wool. So I'd just like to speak to the motion. I think this resolution sets a tone reflecting a lack of interest in seeking understanding first and finding common ground. That's been all too prevalent in the community in relation to decisions that the prior board has made. Anyone supporting this resolution could have called the superintendent before this or called a previous board member and asked us about it. The RIF list is a document that can't be taken alone, you would have to see the entire force numbers to see whether they're changing or not. As Martin, sorry, Commissioner Gulick said, RIFs don't mean you're eliminating people, I mean, positions. It means people might be changing and those positions might be reorganized. I'd also like to call your attention to the agenda of January 22nd, where you'll find a budget presentation, and this is the budget that the board approved. So this is the budget that was set up to achieve these goals, which includes proposed reduction of three full-time equivalents in the elementary school based on enrollment. It also includes an excellent presentation by Director Stephanie Phillips, who is the one who was around when the whole interventionist structure was created. And in that same presentation, on slide number seven, you'll see that there was an original plan for interventionists for grades one to three, and then on the next slide, you'll see the reality that shows why that original plan did not succeed and was not fully implemented. So we heard all of that, and then we made budget decisions based on that, which set a lot of things in motion, not just RIFs, it's had other things in motion because it's, it's the budget. And so I would just like to point out that it's an, it's a, it's not our responsibility to determine the staffing needs of the district, and when we have expertise like Stephanie Phillips advising us on the appropriate pedagogy and the appropriate model, it may be upsetting for people in the schools because there's fear and people don't know what's going to happen, and it's new, and that's hard, and, you know, maybe from a climate perspective, it's not necessarily managed the best way or the way we want it to be managed due to resource constraints. But, you know, our enrollment increases are going to dictate rightsizing, and they have, and we're seeing that at the state level, we're seeing that kind of direction from the state level more and more. So there's a lot of details involved in this conversation that I'm glad people are open to hearing a presentation about because I think it's, there's a lot more, you know, if you weren't involved in the deliberations for the past two to three months, it's, the context gets lost in one short conversation, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Did you, Commissioner?
Sorry, just, Brian's been waiting a while. I guess I would second Liz's point that as a board member that voted on the budget, I was fully aware of the changes, there, there was no confusion on my part, and I believe the budget that went to voters fully and accurately reflects the plan of the administration in terms of staffing. But to the motion, I can't support the motion because it is in direct conflict with Board Policy 3.33, which I will quote. "As long as the superintendent uses any reasonable interpretation of the board's ends and executive limitations policies, the superintendent is authorized to establish all further procedures, make all decisions, take all actions, establish all practices, and pursue all activities. Such decisions of the superintendent shall have the full force and authority as if decided by the board." And giving further direction on RIFs is not something in our executive limitations. It's also, I also haven't heard anyone speak to the unreasonableness of Yow's interpretation of this policy and the direction given, and I think much to the point of the gentleman who spoke, whose name I've forgotten but lives on Ferguson Avenue, I remember that The ends don't justify the means, so I would encourage any board member sympathetic to the motion to look at changing our executive limitations policies rather than willfully ignoring board policy.
Thank you, Commissioner McLaren.
I would like to speak to the program cuts of, or changes in the interventionists. And so the interventionists, it is my understanding that this is the only, the third year that this has been in action, and that's not a long enough time to determine whether or not the interventionists are actually working. What is the metric? What is telling us that this is not working when this is the only, the third school year that this is in action? Proposals like this need to be in action for five or 10 years before we know that they're working for our students, and I believe that the initial intent of this was bridging the achievement gap. So with the interventionists, you're taking essentially six interventionists out of the picture. Those six interventionists are essentially boots on the ground, and they work directly with the students. The one school I'm most familiar with, with how this works, is that children are not taken out of tier-one education, they're taken out of group time to interact with the math and literacy interventionists. And my question here is, why was this decision not made in collaboration with our teachers and educators in the schools who are actually working with children and observing how this works with our children? So that's my point.
Commissioner Barlow?
I welcome the superintendent's offer to give the new board additional context for the cuts or the, the RIFs, but I will also not be supporting this motion.
Commissioner Warren?
Oh, thank you. I, I'd like to find some kind of middle ground here that might satisfy the entire group. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but it strikes me that one of the catalysts of the motion is a sense of urgency on this particular issue. It's deeply felt by some, and I guess a question I have that arises in my mind is, I understand that we absolutely have to follow the contract, we have to follow the law, we've set that in motion under a legally authorized resolution, and I, I respect that. I'm also mindful of Commissioner McLaren's comments about our policy governance policies that we have put in place approximately a year ago. I'm wondering, my question is really this, and I wonder if it might, because it's such a complex issue that I, I can't answer it in terms of what are the legal mechanisms and how far down the road are we? Is it irreversible or is this reversible if even in a low probability scenario, there's the desire and willingness to change the course with respect to these cuts between now and, now and July 1, or now and when the school year begins? So I'm, I'm wondering if, if, first, I, I am grateful for the superintendent for offering to provide us education on, on the specifics of this, the rationale behind it. You know, clearly it appears that the new board really wants the education and to really understand it, and it even appears that the board wants perhaps to get comfortable with it, if it can, after an education period. Is there, is this irreversible? Or can we perhaps think, if we were to table the motion pending, you know, the superintendent's report or further information, and let's even say it's an unlikely scenario, I don't know what the scenario is, but is it something that we have, is it so urgent that irreparable harm would happen tonight if we didn't, if we didn't pass this motion and it turned out this was the right thing to do? Or is there a going back? Do we have the luxury of some time? And can we give those who made the motion some comfort that there, this is not irreversible if we don't make this decision tonight? I don't know, if anyone wants to speak with that, I welcome the superintendent to help briefly educate us on that.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. A couple of things. One, judging by the conversations and the number of questions people are raising, just indicates to me that people need more information, and to make a decision at this point would not be prudent for, for anyone, including myself, in terms of researching back how far down the road we are and what steps we can do in terms of changing anything. But I would also say that the board with this particular resolution is out of compliance in terms of their direction to me, in terms of programmatic, because this is a specific programmatic action that the board had approved through budget and also through the policies and have given the, the superintendent a directive, and so I have complied with that. The questions that I'm hearing seems to be more about the interventionist rather than the RIFs. So I'm, so I'm trying to narrow what the real question is, because the RIF process is something different, right? But I think people are really talking about positions around, that's what they're really talking about, not the RIFs really, because it sounds like that's what people are concerned about, oh, these, these people are being displaced, right? So that's another area that we'd want to clarify in terms of what is it really about? Because we can talk about the RIF process and bring that to you, and you may not be satisfied still, because your real issue may be around positions in there, right? So I would say, once again, that I think I could investigate on, you know, how far we can go. I couldn't give an answer tonight in terms of if it's too late to pull it back or what, so I'm not sure how far. I know I received an email today from a staff member who already has already notified somebody else who they're going to bump, so that I know that stuff is started already. But I'd want the opportunity to at least educate the board on, on some information and then gather what limitations we have in terms of, if the board wanted to go out of compliance and give me a directive to do a programmatic change, then that's something you really want to think about and really have a narrow focus in terms of what that action is, because I would need that clearly. And if that's also going to set something in motion in terms of other policies that are in place already, what does that mean in terms of my interpretation and the board approving that? Because that's what happened. I interpreted, the board approved it, gave me a direction, did that action, and now the board is saying something else. And I'm not even quite sure what that something else is, if it's really about the RIFs list or it's about interventionists or about positions, so I'd want some narrowing focus. I, I would think the prudent thing for the board to do is to send a list of questions that they have, things they might be concerned about, and then in our presentation, we could attempt to answer that, those questions and also give you further information. And then you can make a decision based on what you think would be best for our, our students going forward, right?
Is? No other?
So just to clarify, you're asking that we send a list of questions to the superintendent's office so that we can be educated more fully about this, these issues around interventionists and RIFs at the next board meeting?
Absolutely.
I, I think the reason that I was interested in this motion was, I, I read in this, in this annual report, the, the budget included $787,000 of savings predominantly from non-instructional operations. I see a quote in the, January 23rd, 2018 minutes, that Commissioner Curry expressed appreciation for other commissioners' comments. She requested an amendment that would remove $100,000 from the total amount of the budget as it did not reduce any instructional positions. So, okay, so I'm thinking if they're not, so in the RIF, it looks like you're, you're reducing, you're reducing three teachers totally, I don't care where they're located, but are you, are we reducing three elementary teachers totally in the system? You mentioned that you're, you're changing teachers from, in three different schools, Smith, Sustainability Academy.
I didn't say that.
Well, that's what was in your, the, the PowerPoint that you showed back in January.
Point of order, Chair, we're in the conversation now, so the questions you're asking are questions I should receive and we should have that conversation in the presentation.
Well, this is why.
I would also note that what you reference in the annual report, if you look at the dates and what Commissioner Curry has stated, these are two different years you're comparing. Annual reports are.
This is fiscal '19 budget.
Yes, but the annual report, you said in the annual report.
No, this is a fiscal, you're explaining the fiscal '19 budget, which is, which is what these RIFs will affect.
All right. I think we'll.
Other comments?
Yep.
I, I think this is, you're saying we have a lot of questions. I think the public has as much as we, as we do, and so I think it'd be great, we'll send in questions. And so I think it'd be great, we'll send in questions, and we can gather questions from the community.
It didn't pass, but you said what.
And it'd be great to have you explain the whole big picture all at once, so that we're working with the plan as you craft it and not secondhand.
That would be the prudent thing to do.
Yes. Okay. No further. Okay. Commissioner McLaren?
I move to table the resolution.
Second?
I second that.
Right.
It's not debatable.
Okay, thank you.
Needs a second.
Yep.
Isn't amendable, requires a majority vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's not amendable.
So we just got to call it now, just got to vote.
We just vote up or down to table?
Yep.
Okay.
It's a two-thirds, two-thirds vote?
Simple majority.
Thank you, Counselor.
All those in favor of tabling the motion?
Aye.
Sorry, point of privilege. I'm reading something that says it's a two-thirds vote.
It's two-thirds to cease debate, but a tabling motion is a majority vote.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed to table it?
Anyone opposed to table it?
Keith? One opposition.
So the motion moves, carries.
Great, thank you. Next.
Do we have anything on the agenda? I think that's it.
Adjourn?
Look to adjourn.
So I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Great.